They just follow.
Good evenings. Good to see everybody here. It's 5:30. Please stick around. We'll have some more conversations after the meeting. All right, at this time, I call this meeting of the Bassdrop Independent School District order. Letter of record show that a core of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, if you'd please rise for the pledges and a word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
If you'd please remain standing. With us tonight, we have Student Pastor Jason Wyatt from River Valley Christian Fellowship Church will be offering our prayer this evening.
Thank you, Board, for allowing me to come and pray with you guys to open up in prayer. If you guys would pray with me. Lord, I praise you and thank you for this opportunity to start with you. And I just ask, Lord, as this board meets tonight, Lord, that they see what great ideas these young people will have that come and speak. And I ask specifically for a peace to fall upon the speakers that they couldn't explain that would only be because of you. I ask specifically for Armando, as he comes up, Lord, as I got to meet him before, Lord, that he would just know he's going to kill it. He's going to do an amazing job because you go before him. Have your way. We give you the praise and glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, Mr. Edwards, would you introduce our student speaker this evening for us, please?
Yes, sir. I would be glad to. Our student speaker will be speaking this evening on our character trait for March, which is self-reliance. Here he comes. Armando Resendiz, let me introduce him to you all. He's an 11th grader student at Colorado River Collegiate Academy. Armando is carrying nine hours this semester of ACC. Wow. Spends virtually all of his time on college classes and a job. He works 30 hours or more at HEB to make his payments on his new truck. All right, brother, I got to know, what'd you get? What kind of truck did you get?
I got a 2023 Chevrolet Silverado.
Woo, good call, good call. All right, Armando. He's been nominated by his teachers to attend the boys' state this summer. And he is also, we've previously recognized him for earning the 2023 Global Seal of Bilitracy. He is truly an excellent student. Armando?
All right, thank you, guys. So like Mr. Barry Edwards has stated, my name is Armando Resendiz. And before I start, I wanted to let you guys know how honored I am to be here. I mean, it truly is an honor to be standing here before you guys. But more importantly, a quick thank you to my teachers who have presented me with opportunity to be here tonight. So with that, let's get started. What of self-reliance? So self-reliance, believe it or not, is a bit more complicated than you may think. Self-reliance isn't just a concept that we can take in overnight. I want you to think of it as something that empowers yourself to take a hold of one's life and forge your own path. And self-reliance will push you to achieve a state of mind that is independent, both physically and mentally. And once you do, man, the sky's the limit because only you and yourself only can know what you're capable of. For example, when I turned 16, I wanted to get a job right off the bat. And just in case you didn't know, 16 is the minimum age required by most places to get a job. So, you know, right off the bat, I wanted to get started. And my reason for this was that I didn't just want to have to rely on my parents for everything, for the things that I wanted, even though I knew they would still be there and I appreciate them for that. I wanted to do things my way. So they let me do it. And it has been a year since then. And up till now, I have still maintained my academic success exactly the same, if not a bit better. And about four months ago, like you said, I just bought myself a brand-new truck right off the lot. And man, was it amazing, you know? The feeling that I got of it finally being mine was something that you just won't forget. But before that, I did get some people telling me, you know, "Man, you're crazy. You really want to get this at your age." You know, "That is being irresponsible," or "This is such a huge responsibility at your age." But joke's on them because not only am I, not like, like, it is. Not only do I have a sweet truck, do I still have my job, but I'm still attending school with straight A's in all of my classes. And like you said, over half of these classes are college courses, given the fact that I'm attaining a dual-credit enrollment class. And, you know, it's really amazing throughout these years. Throughout this year, the skills that I have picked up, like multitasking and being able to live a double life. And I just know that it's going to come in handy throughout my college career. So I believe that self-reliance is something that we should all strive for because especially in this fast-moving-paced world where we simply just cannot wait for them to open the door for us and forge our path. And I'm not saying isolate yourself from the rest of the world because from time to time, you know, we all need someone to fall back on. But I'm saying, and I can guarantee you, that there will come a time where you will fall back and there will be no one there to pick you up. So when that day comes, I just want you to be ready to pick yourself back up and say, "I got this." And that's it, guys. Thank you for your time. My name is Armando Resendiz.
Yeah, Armando, you need people to ride your truck with you too, right? We have a gift for you. You did an outstanding job. Thank you so much. What a great example you are. Thank you, Armando. Oh, yes, Armando, who came with you? I know you said some of your teachers. Anybody else come with you? Can you introduce them, please? What a great job. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll move along to our recognitions and special presentations. We have the elementary UIL winners. Malaney Kovar is Mina Elementary Assistant Principal, Elementary UIL Coordinator. Welcome. Okay. Welcome.
Members, Mr. Edwards, I'm here to talk about elementary UIL. You see some of our pictures up there. On March 2nd, at Cedar Creek High School, we held our elementary UIL event. Our coaches had worked all fall semester and into the spring semester to get our students ready for events such as spelling, storytelling, chess, number sense, music memory, and other events that were in there. They had a wide variety to choose from and participate in. Our assistant principals at all the campuses helped to set up and coordinate the event. And then on the day, we've got some of our principals back here, as well as additional teachers and everybody helped to make the event successful on that day. So kids competed in the events, and we had an awards ceremony at the end where we had lots of recognition and lots of excitement as they placed in all the different events. So I would like to say, because it does take not only just the coaches, who put in a lot of time and effort after school with our students, but also, like I said, all of the people that volunteered. We had people from the community coming out and participating as judges in some of our oral storytelling events. I actually got to judge one of those this year, and it's just a great experience to see all of the things that our kids get to accomplish and to see them excited to put in the hard work and participate that and show that off to other people. But I do want to thank the campus administrators, especially the assistant principals who helped put this together, all of the coaches that gave their time and effort, and the parents, and just congratulate all of the students that participated and won ribbons that day. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving along to our Lemonade Day special guests. We obviously can see who they are in the room. Ms. Trevino, our Director of Community Relations, is here for a presentation.
Thank you. I do have the honor of introducing our special guests. We have three people who are familiar faces in the community. Becky Wumble, Jamie Haney, and Megan Webb. And we also have one maybe new face that we'd like to introduce to talk about Lemonade Day. This is Lemmy.
Goodies.
Oh, he brought candy.
Thank you. Pass them off to the ladies with love. There you go. Oh, you got more. There you go. Thank you.
Lemmy came ready.
Lemmy has a pocket.
Thank you.
Well, I definitely want my cup now. There we go. Preloaded.
So good evening, School Board. My name is Becky Wumble, and I'm the proud president of the four-star-accredited Bassdrop Chamber of Commerce. If you have not heard, we got that accreditation back in November, and we're screaming it from the rooftops. So anyways, we're here tonight to proudly present Lemonade Day. We actually got the Lemonade Day license in 2019 and had planned to have a Lemonade Day in May of 2020. Well, we all know what happened then, and we don't want to talk about it anymore. So anyways, this year, we pushing full steam ahead, and we are introducing Lemonade Day. And we are very appreciative to the Bassdrop Independent School District for partnering with us to present this in our after-school programs. We, over the last two days, have been to Bassdrop Intermediate School. We did appearance today at Cedar Creek Intermediate School, and we'll do another one tomorrow. So Lemonade Day is an entrepreneurial program that teaches kids to spend, share, and save. What could be better than teaching kids about entrepreneurial skills? So they have to do a business plan, a marketing plan. They get to pick their location. And so it's an opportunity for them to, you know, put together and learn financial literacy. So we're super excited about presenting this program. You were handed a sponsorship packet. We're very fortunate that several of the banks have stepped up. Bassdrop EDC has done our sponsorship for our license, and we're looking for other sponsors in the community to help us. You can help with as little as $10 to help pay for a workbook. So anyways, this is Megan Webb. Megan is our Chair of our Lemonade Day Council, as well as our Chair-elect for the Bassdrop Chamber of Commerce. Again, Jamie Haney is with us, and she's our VP. And so anyways, again, we're excited about partnering with the school district. And again, Lemonade Day is going to be Saturday, May 4th, with lemonade stands all across the community. You want anything else, or?
Well, I'll always talk to a microphone. I just wanted to say we've really tried to be mindful of the fact that there are startup costs associated with starting a business and that not all of our students may have access to that. So I'm really excited for our pitch contest, Best of the Zest. It's a Shark Tank-style idea where the kids actually get to create their business plan and go and pitch to investors and get that startup money. We're also going to have a stand-building day, so really excited for the ways that we're also supporting the kids and the caregivers as they embark on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving along here to our Cedar Creek High School Boys Basketball. We have our head coach, Valentino Maxwell, here, and our presenter is Elliot Allen, Director of Athletics. Coach?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Edwards and Board. It's my honor and privilege to introduce our Cedar Creek Boys Basketball Program, who this year had their first playoff win in school history. And it's truly amazing to watch how much heart and how much grit these guys played with all year. It was very inspiring. So Coach Maxwell had an emergency with his newborn baby today, and so we found out a few hours ago he couldn't make it. But we have Coach Carruthers here. He's our assistant basketball coach, does a fine job. And he's going to talk about our Cedar Creek Boys Basketball Team. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for allowing us to come here. And I want to thank Coach Allen, Coach Thomas, and Ms. Stagman, specifically for allowing us the opportunity to represent Cedar Creek and be with these guys on a day-in-and-day-out basis. They're a really special group. They put very lofty goals out to begin the year. Some of them we didn't hit, but to have a group of high achievers put those goals out and achieve the things that we did was really special. So again, Coach Maxwell couldn't be here. He was just an awesome person and an awesome coach. And I know that he's very sad not to be here. Monica Garcia, I would be remiss not to thank her as she makes everything go in our athletic department. So just a list of our guys. First, some of the guys that aren't here, Dakota Baker, Eli Myers, Jack Casey, Kavion Houston, Phineas Copeland, Gavin Reynolds, and Micah McDonald. Micah was a second-team All-District player. Those that are here, Cole Masters, Dylan Doobie, Leland Washington, honorable mention, All-District. Braden Adams, honorable mention, All-District. KJ Franklin was first-team All-District and co-offensive Player of the Year. And Robert Conrad, first-team All-District and MVP of the district. So please give these guys a hand. So like I said, their hard work and dedication was, it started probably when they were kids. But I got here last year, and it's been pretty relentless since. We won 25 games this year, which, from our records, is the most in BISD history. We couldn't find everything from before the '80s, though, so. Just once again, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank y'all for being here. All right, next we have Bassdrop ISD Communications, Dr. Lee, our Deputy Superintendent.
Yes, indeed. So I'm happy to come before you to give some recognition to a couple of people who never get recognized because they're always behind-the-scenes recognizing others. But at the Texas School Public Relations Association Annual Conference, the BISD Communications Department won several awards. This is the first, and this is the best-in-category, which is best-in-category of any video production in a language other than English across the state. And so this was produced in-house, in fact, completely in-house, using animation. In addition, all of the voices were BISD people as well. And so this was our 2023 Bond video that won this best-in-category statewide award. And then in addition, the district won five Gold Star Awards in a multitude of categories. So not only in print, digital design, but in photography, in music video. That middle star is for a training instructional video in a partnership with our MTSS coaches and staff on how to be safe, respectful, and responsible in our classrooms and in our hallways at school. And then a couple of others, the photos taken by both Lori Enzaldua and Chris White. Chris is probably, he's right there. I see him. So if I could get them, where's Lori? Lori's back here. She loves, when I call her out, she loves to stand up and receive applause. But please, give these guys. They're amazing. They make Bassdrop ISD look very great, and it has been my privilege to lead them. But before I leave the podium, I want to introduce you to their next leader, which is Cassie Valderas. She has just joined us, and she is standing right back here. She comes to us directly from the city of Flugerville as their Public Information Officer, but she also has experience in communications in both Hutto ISD and Flugerville ISD. But now she's going to bring all of that expertise to Bassdrop and take us to new levels. So congratulations to the entire Communications Department team. You guys rock.
Lee, congratulations. Well done. This time, we'll move into our open forum. The Board encourages comments from citizens of the district or district employees. Anyone that has signed up and wishes to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so at this time. The Board asks that the comments pertaining to public education. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act upon any issue that are not posted on the agenda. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the Board will defer discussion of that issue until the appropriate time during the meeting. At no time will the Board entertain questions from the audience and ask that all attendees be respectful of others speaking and presenting. The Board will not allow the use of any derogatory comments towards any individual staff member, teachers, or board members. The Board has adopted complaint policies that are designated to secure that at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students and their parents may be heard in accordance with the policies FNG Legal and FNB Local. We will allow 30 minutes for open forum, and we have two speakers signed up here this evening. Therefore, each speaker will be given three minutes, and we will take those in the order that they were signed up. And our first speaker here is Don Udell. Is that correct, Don? All right. Yes, sir.
My name is Don Udell. I'm the owner and operator of Udell Security Solutions. I don't know if you guys remember me from last month, mentioning about using the chaplains as tools. And some of the rebuttal I heard was security and background checks. So let me start off with security. I've been in the security asset protection industry for 35 years. I've done everything from little bitty shacks like this to Camp Pendleton Marine Base. This past fall, I had my niece for about four months, and we enrolled her in Bassdrop High School. After a month in school, I had to go drop something off to her, and I had to park in the back parking lot. And I was trying to get my way, I've never been there, trying to get my way, trying to find the administration building. And somebody pointed, "Go through that door. It's just right through there." It was one of the staff members. I went through, I was lost for 10 minutes. There was a back door that was unlocked. I was walking around the school in the building for 10 minutes. And somebody else pointed to me, "It's down that hallway." And I finally did make it. Now, don't get me wrong. I think what you guys are doing for the students, when I see them up here, that's awesome. That's your job. Security's not your job. That's mine. And I see that, and it gets very, very, very disturbing. The doors were unlocked. The camera system, they're some of the lowest grade I've ever seen. And I understand everybody's on a budget and everything's there. What became really disturbing for me is after two months, we found my 14-year-old niece was having relations with a 19-year-old boy on campus that wasn't a student. I had to bring it to the Police Department, the Sheriff Department. And to my knowledge, they never did find the kid, the 19-year-old boy, because he was hanging around on campus and in the cafeteria. So, security, I'd love to help you guys out. That's the reason I handed my card. I'll donate eight hours to go through all your schools. I'm not asking for the work. I'll donate and do an evaluation for you for nothing. Because security is thing, and students, kids, are our future for tomorrow. And I love them. Love all of them. Now, the other thing I found there was the security system. And criminals and bad guys, look at this. The keypad on the wall is in trouble. It has a trouble light on it. I drove by today, and I can see through there and still see the trouble light. It's a yellow amber light, and it says FC, which means failure to communicate. If something was to happen, the phones went down, the gal behind the counter can't even push the button to call the cops because nothing will happen. It needs to be rectified. And I understand you put security first, but you guys are on a budget. I am local. I'll donate eight hours to do an evaluation for you guys, and I'll lay everything out. Doesn't mean I want, don't get me wrong, I'm a business owner. I'd love to have the work. But it's also part of my community. These kids are part of my community, and I don't want to give all to here. One real quick thing, background checks, if I may. Take 30 seconds. Background checks for the chaplains. They're already done by state, city, county, and even feds. And you guys want to implement background checks? I'm not sure what else you guys could do far above than what they already have. Now, unless you want to go back to, like, check their grades in school. And they've already had background checks, and I think we need to put them in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards, would you please have Chief Budge follow up with Mr. Udell? Appreciate it. Thank you for bringing that to us. Our next speaker here is Philip Lawhan.
Good evening, Superintendent, fellow trustees. My name is Philip Lawhan. I'm an electrician by trade. I'm a member of the Central Texas Building Trades Council. And today, we're going to be giving a presentation on prevailing wage, which is the law that mandates the wage and benefit structure for the construction workers within any public entity, whether it's federal or state. So we'll be doing a 10-minute presentation here today with you guys. And I just wanted to use my first three minutes so I don't go into my other 10 that I was allotted. But I just want to, you know, just hit on a few topics here before our presentation. You know, we just recognized a bunch of great athletes here that some of them are going to college, some of them are not. They invested all their youth, all the way through high school. They invested every bit of time and effort into that. Now, where are they going to go, right? Did they excel in academics like this other young student that was up here speaking that has a great career, a great pathway, knows where he's going? You know, we don't know what each student's going to do. But with what we have, the opportunity with our bond projects and the construction of them is, under the state law with the prevailing wage, the school district is the fiduciary responsibilitator of that fundings. And we need to make sure that we're doing what we can properly to invest into our students to be the future in our community and give them the best pathway into the workforce. I'm not here as a contractor. I'm here to speak on behalf of our students and what their next steps are and what we can do for them by integrating our construction technology program, speaking with these football, basketball coaches. speaking with these football, basketball coaches, different areas that we could touch on to really bring all this together for a clear pathway for students that are not going into college or don't have some job that they already have aligned or whatever. But these are paid apprenticeship programs. Most of them are paid. This is not a union or a non-union issue, so just, we can get that out of the way. This is a pathway for students after they leave high school. And I was speaking with a lady here. It's already been three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I'll finish up here in a minute.
See you in a bit.
All right.
Thank you. All right, moving along to our reports. Looks like our superintendent and curriculum report is for information only, which takes us into our financial report, Budget Development Update Number Two. Deana Egger, our chief financial officer, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Are you having fun, Ms. Egger?
Oh, yeah. A lot of fun, especially this year. So this evening, I'll be providing the latest update of budget development for 2024-25. There's not a whole lot that's changed since my last presentation, but we'll take you through how our current fiscal year is estimated to end. Then we'll move into new budget assumptions and considerations, and then we'll talk about some upcoming action items. So similar to last year, one of the most significant factors impacting this year's budget is average daily attendance. As you guys know, average daily attendance is one of the most sensitive numbers in the funding formula. And we can, we continue to see averages below pre-COVID numbers. We did have some recovery over the prior year this year, like from October through, in the first semester, from October through Christmas break. But then coming out of Christmas break, there was a lot of illness, and our attendance tanked again. So we're back down averaging about 92%. It's very similar to last year's compared to our pre-COVID number of 94%. Most school districts across the country are still experiencing this phenomenon. It is not new to Texas or to Bassdrop I S D, but we will continue to budget for lower-than-expected attendance next year as well.
Has there been any communication with the department that's responsible for that? Any extra efforts?
There have been. Really, we were doing really well in the first semester, and I'm telling you, this flu and COVID hit hard coming out of the break, and even my staff were all ill. And it, it just plummeted, and it brought our average down. And we, you know, we were trending better, and then this illness happened, so.
Thank you.
Okay. So this next slide, in the left column, our prior year actuals. Your middle column is this year's adopted budget, and the right column is year-end estimates. So as we roll into the end of this fiscal year, we are seeing tax collections coming in much lower than budgeted. So why is that? Well, when we adopt the budget in June, we're doing that off of preliminary property values that are received in April. If you recall, the 100K homestead was not in effect yet, so our collections were anticipated to be higher. Then, moving forward into November, the 100K homestead was adopted through, and then collections come down. But the corresponding offset is with state aid going up. So you'll see that offset, collections coming down, state aid going up. And included in that state aid revenue is an additional 72 students in average daily attendance from the budget. So that's additional revenue that we'll enjoy. Interest earnings are also up, and we're seeing planned increases to the expenditures. And that's mainly attributable to those one-time startup costs for bringing operations in-house. So we're currently anticipating to end the year with a modest increase to fund balance of about $340,000, which leaves us within board policy and also within best practice. But it's nearly a balanced budget. It's very tight. So moving into next year, we are modeling enrollment and ADA growth at 3.4%. We have received those preliminary, or I say pre-preliminary or very early preliminary property values from the Central Appraisal District. And that growth, we're measuring from July of certification, when we got the certified values, because it had the 100K homestead in there, to current estimates, and that's about 6%. We can't go April to April because last April, we didn't have the 100K homestead. So it'd be like comparing apples to oranges. We do expect this to change when we receive preliminary values, because these are very early numbers. When we receive those preliminary values in April, we'll probably see some change. And then again, in July, property values usually decline from April to July because of protests and under review. But if no changes happen or made to the funding formulas, we only expect to gain $3 million year-over-year in revenue. So $3 million, to put this in perspective, is only a 2% increase in revenue year-over-year compared to a 3.4% increase in enrollment. So that tells you our revenue increases, our funding formulas are not keeping up with our enrollment growth. Okay, we are continuously monitoring many variables that can change outcomes and influence budget decisions. We did talk about ADA earlier. So every 50 students in ADA is about $340,000. So 300 students in ADA is $2 million. 300 students is about a 2.5% increase in our current ADA, which is, it's reasonable. We could, we could get there. We're also hearing discussions, I mentioned this last presentation, of a possible change to the hold harmless funding, because there's a known flaw. People are lobbying for this change, and that would produce, yield more revenue for us. But of course, with that extra yield in revenue, other considerations that need to be balanced with that are teacher pay and compensation increases, inflation, increases to healthcare and property casualty insurance. As we know, we're going to get a pretty significant increase in property casualty, and then, of course, the expiration of ESER funding. Property value growth combined with tax compression will impact the tax rate. We won't have those numbers until July, when the CAD produces that certified value. We'll bring that tax rate in August, and then we'll adopt in September. And moving on to our timeline, we continue to monitor activity very closely. We'll have many decisions to make for quickly approaching actions leading up to budget adoption, including a budget workshop and another briefing in April. And then again, possible adoption in May. But we do have until June, if we need to, to adopt the budget. We receive those certified property values again in July. We'll take that tax rate. That'll determine the tax rate with the tax compression. We're held to that 2.5% property value increase. And then we will adopt the tax rate in September. And that is what I have for you this evening. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Thank you for keeping your eye on this. I know it's a different year.
A different year.
And so hang in there. Appreciate your team's efforts and support here. All right, moving along to our Human Resources and Student Services report. It's information only, as well as our operation report and our police report are for information only. Leads us into our Deputy Superintendent's Report, which is the bond 2023 prevailing wage. Our presenter here is Lee Raspberry, Director of Construction and Planning. Mr. Raspberry.
Good evening. Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Edwards. We'll have a brief discussion, or we'll talk briefly about minimum prevailing wage this evening. Okay. So prevailing wage governed by Texas Government Code 2258, consisting of three subchapters. The first subchapter of the code offers general provisions and definitions, which is typical. Subchapter B describes payment of prevailing wage rates and how prevailing wage rates are determined. There's actually two ways that this is done, and I'll talk about that in just a second. Subchapter C relates to enforcement of the other two subchapters or for non-compliance. To determine prevailing wages, a political subdivision has two options. We can conduct a survey of wages received by classes of workers employed on projects for a character similar to the contract work that we currently do in the district and/or using a prevailing wage rate as determined by the United States Department of Labor in accordance with the Davis-Bacon Act. Those are the only two ways that we can establish a Minimum Prevailing Wage Act in the district for our bond construction projects. For the 2023 bond projects, prevailing wage rates will be established by a record vote of the Board of Trustees at the April 2024 regular board meeting. So that'll be coming up. Are there any questions?
This is definitely for some clarity, since we're televising for the crowd, that this is for wages for subcontractors on our bond projects, not school employees.
That's correct. This is not for employees of the district. This is for subcontractors, for contractors and their subs on our bond, our public bond construction projects.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
No problem. Thank you.
Questions?
No, just go to the next slide.
There we go. So the, this is the presentation by Philip Lawhan that he alluded to earlier. He'll be coming up and giving a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Raspberry. Gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawhan, who else do we have here with us?
So this is my coworker here, Brian.
Brian Pollock. I'm an electrician with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers and representative for the Central Texas Building Trades.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raspberry.
So who are we representing? The Central Texas Building Trades. The Central Texas Building Trades is an organization that represents various construction and building trades unions within the Central Texas region. We serve as a collective voice for member unions advocating for workers' rights, wages, benefits, safe working conditions. The council also focuses on promoting skilled labor and training programs, fostering collaboration among different trades and engaging with the community and industry stakeholders to advance the interests of our members and contribute to the region's economic development. Mr. Raspberry already covered what prevailing wage is. It's a compensation standard. It's area-specific, so it's, it looks at this region within the jurisdiction of B I S D. It's to promote fair compensation. It includes benefits often, public works, and generally applied to public works. So what is Davis-Bacon? That's one of the two methods that Mr. Raspberry pointed out. Davis-Bacon is a act that was enacted several decades back. And what it does is, is if a public body adopts Davis-Bacon directly, they don't have to perform their own survey, which can be costly. It's standardized all across the country. It's very transparent. You can look up the entire process. The Department of Labor provides plenty of training for all those participating. And it also covers fringe benefits as well. So you get an accurate picture of what's going on in the area, what people are making. That way, when we make these public investments, like this bond, that we're ensuring that contractors aren't undermining the local economy, local wages, all that, so that public investment is then maximized. Though it also improves oversight. It comes with, some of the requirements on there are certified payroll. And since y'all have a construction manager onsite already, they'll be handling all of that. It also encourages local employment. Workforce development, as it encourages apprenticeship training, certified apprenticeship trainings. That way, the contractors that do end up getting the bids for these jobs are investing in these workers so that they become more valuable. We're providing, you know, the school district will be providing a good pathway for students who are currently in C T E programs or would like to be in C T E programs. Good job so that they can be ensured that they can provide for their families and have a good, healthy economic contributing family in the area. They also are, tend to be a lot more accurate than independent surveys, because they have been so standardized. They, they've been doing this a lot, so they're not having to come up with a whole new method on the fly. They're, they're well experienced in making sure that everyone can follow through and the broadest possible amount of employers are participating. So for comparison, the current B I S D survey, which was adopted some time back, I'm not sure where y'all got that. I couldn't find good information on that. But it currently has electricians there rate at $16.51. No, no fringe benefits on top of that.
And that's for a skilled, journeyman, licensed electrician?
Yeah, this is, this is a journeyman, which typically requires five years of training. Very, very extensive, very highly skilled workers. In comparison, the current D O L survey has electricians at $31.52 just on the check, plus $5, plus 11%, and $5.73 for fringe benefits on top of that. So we're also ensuring that people are able to get healthcare, possibly, you know, build retirement and not be indigent also.
I think it's Texas workforce, just FYI.
Sure.
Catch the, keep everybody, I know Priscilla's new to the board, so.
Right. And the D O L is currently undertaking an entirely updated survey as well. But just for comparison, right now, our introductory rate for electricians at I B W Local 520, that has jurisdiction here, our introductory rate is higher than that, $16.51, just for a brand-new, just-on-the-job electrician. So this is about Bassdrop, investing in Bassdrop. Y'all just passed this, this large bond. You know, the community agrees that they need to be making this investment in the future of the community. And so we, what we're encouraging is maximizing that investment. And Davis-Bacon wage circulates money within the local economy by supporting, and supporting local businesses by ensuring that, that workers are paid well, and then that goes back into Bassdrop and is not going elsewhere. Higher wages lead to reduced turnover, higher job satisfaction, and a more skilled and available workforce. What, what we're running into a lot now, and what we've been warning about for a while, is that by not investing and developing these workers, we're going to run into a problem when, you know, we've got all this growth coming this, this way, especially towards Central Texas, where we don't have the skilled workforce that we need in order to build all the things that need to be built. And so that's gonna, that could potentially bring the local economy to a crashing halt and reduce investment in the area. There's a potential for improved work quality due to more experienced and skilled workers. And that means the facilities that y'all are investing in, that you need, are going to be more likely to be built on time and on budget. B I S D students can feel confident in starting a career here in Bassdrop. That will allow them to provide for a thriving family. If you're a student and you're in a C T E program, but you're looking at your own, your own school district and knowing that workers there are struggling, that's, that's not encouraging. It's, it's very discouraging. And there's nothing that will, you know, make somebody strive for more than knowing that, that, that hard work will pay off. A highly trained worker is a safe worker. Another thing is, is, you know, we want the workers who are building our facilities to be able to go home at the end of the day, whole, and that their families aren't going to struggle because there, there was an accident. So this isn't an uncommon thing to be adopting here. It's actually pretty, pretty common, especially in Central Texas, among all kinds of school districts and all kinds of different, different areas, districts and all kinds of different areas, rural, suburban, urban, wealthy school districts, less wealthy school districts. For example, we have Austin ISD, Gerald ISD, Taylor ISD, Dripping Springs ISD, Kamal ISD. It's difficult to get a complete list because we have to do public information requests for everyone. They're rarely, you know, publicly available.
City of Bassdrop, the county of Bassdrop has adopted Davis Bacon.
Austin Community College, Travis County, Elgin, Williamson County, all these, very, very common. So like Mr. Raspberry said, you know, the establishment of prevailing wage, the law laying that out is in Chapter 2258 of the Texas State Government Code. Again, this is about investment in Bassdrop, investment in the students and the future of Bassdrop, and ensuring that, you know, those students that live here and will eventually be workers in Bassdrop or, you know, living in Bassdrop aren't having to drive an hour, hour and a half into Austin to build Austin, but they don't want to be here to build their own home. For more information on all the documents, this QR code is available. There you'll find the full list of the current prevailing wage rates for BISD, Davis Bacon rate, the latest Davis Bacon wage determinations, the Texas prevailing wage law, and just for comparison, the IBW wage and benefits packages. Thank you for your time.
And we're hoping that with this presentation, that it's going to educate each and every one of you trustees here on this, on this board to make a decision on your own, and that is going to invest into the students of who we're teaching. And I just wanted to make sure that you guys get all the questions answered and fully understand the vote that's coming up in April, and that you are making a well-educated decision upon yourself on the direction that the school district's going to go.
Are there any questions on this?
This is kind of a team answer, not directing these to y'all. Mr. Raspberry, this has to be voted on for each new bond passed?
It doesn't necessarily have to be voted on for each, for each new bond. Some entities vote every two or three years. University of Texas votes and updates every five years.
Mandated by the state of Texas that we have to decide basically which wage, Davis Bacon or a wage survey, we have to adopt, we have to adopt something, and something has to be in place.
That is correct, sir.
And it's common, obviously, update that as we can see, so, okay. Believe this, but some other surveys as well for the board between now and next month, and be getting a recommendation for our superintendent from Mr. Raspberry.
While here, the, setting the prevailing wage, either under the Davis Bacon or a survey or anything, prevailing wage is the minimum amount that's served, right? But the contractors, if they have to pay more to get the workers in, they still have to pay more. I mean, that's just, it just says the minimum amount. Is that the way that works?
That's correct, sir. It's, we shouldn't, they shouldn't be paying less than that wage.
Had, you know, our number and the Davis Bacon numbers, while I understand ours were three years old, you said, the 16?
Right.
I don't remember it being that big of a difference at that time from what the Davis Bacon numbers were. We haven't done a survey this time. Is that accurate? Not as of yet.
One's being put together.
Okay. And then we can look at it side by side and see what the real difference is.
Correct. There'll be several options. Last time, I believe we used the Texas workforce. There's going to be another independent one put together so we can, we'll have three to look at.
Some comparison.
Some comparison across the board. And just historically, I don't know, I could probably Google this or somebody in the room could, the whole purpose of this, this goes back how many years ago for equal wage and rights for workers? Is that why this was developed through the state in 1931? There we go, okay.
Was to actually reinvest the taxpayers' dollars back into the community. It wasn't for equal pay or equal rights or anything of that nature. It was to regenerate the taxpayers, so contractors couldn't come from New York and come down to Texas and take all this taxpayer's money and just run back off and take it away. It was going to be localized, county, and by municipality and county, it, you know, it doesn't say in the, you know, it clearly states in the, in the state law that it is a survey or the Davis Bacon rate from the county or the municipality where the work is being done. So that doesn't encompass Texas Rural Commissions, which is Williamson County, Burnet County, Hayes County. This is specific to Bassdrop County.
And to clarify, it's, it's also, they don't have to pay that rate to every worker. If the employer is investing in that worker's training, putting them through an accredited apprenticeship program, then they don't have to pay that rate. And that's, that's the big difference there, because if you're, if you're not adopting Davis Bacon, then that requirement doesn't exist. So it's about making the workforce more skilled, more valuable, developing it further so that the local area is ready to build whatever is necessary.
So like you said, with the minimum rate, right? So that's the minimum rate they would have to pay. But if you have an approved DOL program, bona fide program through the Department of Labor, you can pay 50% of that and then 60 and 70 for apprentice wages up to that, but that, that will be the bottom dollar of the set prevailing wage rate.
And I ask these questions, it's been a while since we've looked at this, and I have some new trustees and folks in the audience who fully understand. And so we are, we do have y'all survey, we're getting a couple others to look at. This is a vote that will come at the next board meeting. And so, any other questions from the board?
If I something, so you're saying that if we don't adopt Davis Bacon, the apprenticeship is not available?
It's available, it's just not required or encouraged quite as much. What this does is just, it really gives that incentive for the employer to ensure that they're, they are training workers and investing them rather than paying them a little, not training them, not making them skilled.
So it'll give them that composite crew rate level to where they can pay a lower percentage than that minimum rate, like Mr. Dillon said. So it does, in the DOL adoption of the Davis Bacon rates, all the language comes along with it, and it does require that all subcontractors have a, if available, a bona fide, approved apprenticeship program, and that's where you earn, where you learn.
Quick question, this may be for Barry or Mr. Raspberry. So we did have American Contractors that was overseeing in terms of the, as a general contractor, is that correct? And will that continue, or will you now assume the position of contractors essentially?
That's still the responsibility of our general contractors.
CMA at Risk hires the subcontractors, and so a lot of these wages would be into the subcontractor's trade that are out there now. Our contractor does do some self-perform, so it would pertain to them as well in the concrete area, but the other trades, it, I think it goes across the board.
And just to be clear, sorry, our budget doesn't change. Effectively, we passed a bond, we have a bond budget, and that's what we work with. There isn't anything that's altered for us.
Correct. So the last bond, 2023 bond, was 320, 325 million, I believe, somewhere around there? So that, that is the budget that the construction manager at Risk has to come in at budget on, whatever company, American Constructors or Hensel Phelps, or whoever's going to be overseeing the construction of all the sites, then they hire the subcontractors. And these wages affect the profits of the subcontractors. It does not affect the overall budget of the bond. The bond is a, is a budget, and that is what, that is what it is. So the general contractor has to come in at that, at that budget, and then their subcontractors determining on how well they can sharpen their pencil, or get better material rates, or better management, or have an apprenticeship program where they could lower their rates and have different percentages with their apprenticeship program.
Reese, they go out for a minimum of probably two to three bids for like a mechanical contractor, and before they, when they turn those bids in, they have the parameters of this wage that we've adopted. So that's already figured into their, their bid, and then they bring their recommendation to the school district, Mr. Raspberry, Mr. Edwards, for the nod to use that sub. That's how that process works. So yeah, it's good questions.
And I think the time we, you know, when, when the wages were adopted, that we just had a unilaterally set wage rate that was given to the district. Now that we have a construction manager here that has a lot of more knowledge of the industry, and he could have a better oversight on that, and that, you know, it wasn't a true survey of this community, of this county or the municipality, and it was just a survey that the construction manager at Risk decided to bring before you guys to be in compliance with the law.
One other thing too is, last time when we came up with these numbers and were looking, I think from a board member's standpoint, I was concerned because, you know, we sold the community this, they're going to build something, and then we looked at the numbers, and there was worry that we weren't going to be able to come through with a big increase in payroll. And so if, if I could ask, when we look at the numbers next month, if we can kind of get that idea of, okay, if we do this, we're going to have to cut corners here, if that's, if that makes sense? I mean, we have, we have the budget.
I think this example wasn't so much payroll is what you were saying, it was the cost of materials. You know, the $25 million elementary came in at 32 million, and so to go with something that cost even more money, we were trying to just figure out how to get within a budget at the time, right?
Through with our promises that we made to the public that, hey, this bond is going to buy this, and then we're sitting here going, well, okay, we wanted it to buy that. So how do we make that happen?
It's because it did come in on time and under budget, so.
The state law should never affect the overall budget of the bond when it's put out and whatever construction manager gets awarded that bond. That, those labor rates will affect the electrical contractor or the mechanical contractor and his profit margin or hers. Instead of them making 22% profit, they might only make 17% profit off of their labor rates. And that's us investing back into making sure that our students that are graduating these programs are getting a living wage and are being enrolled into an apprenticeship program and can be a productive citizen within the community. It has nothing to do with the overall budget of that. The labor rates have nothing to do with the budget.
This is just for hollow, I guess, as far as Davis Bacon, and it's the federal government setting that rate, Department of Labor. But, and so, does the federal government really know what our labor rates are in our community, or how do they come up with their rates?
So right now, the Department of Labor has an open survey for Austin and San Antonio, and therefore for Bear County and Travis County, and therefore surrounding counties. And it's an open survey for any and all contractors of all trades to accurately fill out their information of, of the valuation of what type of project they're on, how many employees they have, how many journeymen-level people they have, what their pay rates are, what their friend benefits are, how many apprentices they have. So this is an open to the industry, so every, anybody and everybody in the industry should be aware and know that these, that deals with public entities, that does work with public entities, should be well aware that there's an open survey, and those are where all these, these surveys are coming in from those contractors that are filling them out and sending them back into the Department of Labor. They'll compile all the information, and that is due on April the 29th of this year. And then, so they could potentially change, you know, later on, but it changes with whatever the, whatever the rates are that were surveyed, whatever, whatever numbers they compiled, so. And it's not going to overall affect, I mean, like I said, it doesn't affect the budget or anything else. You know, the difference is, is, you know, the school district going out and conducting their own survey and going around to every construction project in this county and asking every electrician, every plumber that they can come across and say, how much are you making? What's your wages? What's your benefits? And, or paying an entity to go do that, right? So the Department of Labor has, is already and has already conducted a survey. So why would we go out and conduct another survey unless we're trying to suppress the wages of the workers and lower down something for, for whatever reason when we already have something in place? That's my personal opinion.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you for updating us and enlightening us, and we appreciate y'all coming out and doing that. All right, thanks. All right, moving along here to consent agenda. Would any member of the board like to pull any of the consent agenda items for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. We have a motion. A second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, motion carries. All right, moving along to our action items. Consider approval of interlocal agreement between Bassdrop County and Bassdrop ISD for Colony Oaks Elementary Crosswalk and School Zone. Chief Bunch, welcome.
Welcome. Thank y'all so much for having me again. I know we've had this conversation a couple times. So since Colony Oaks was built, there's been no school zone in the area, and there's also been no crosswalk. And so there's been conversation between our construction engineers and the county engineer, and so it wasn't really moving forward. And so we were kind of stuck in a stalemate of what the county engineer wanted and what we wanted. But there were some conversations that were had with County Commissioner Mel Hamner, and the county commissioners have decided to move forward and give us an interlocal agreement that you have that establishes a crosswalk and a school zone in front of Colony Oaks Elementary School. And so what they've done is they've signed it. They're going on April 25th to do the community announcement, and then they will have an opportunity for the community to come forward on April 8th for, to present what they believe should be on that road. And I truly believe a school zone is what we need in front of an elementary school, especially in front of a school that is being built in a neighborhood that's growing rapidly, and that we hope the foot traffic and the bicycle traffic will pick up, and that it will be that neighborhood school that we want it to be. So what I recommend is that you agree with the county and sign the interlocal agreement, that we will have a crosswalk and a school zone in front of Colony Oaks Elementary School.
Highly encourage at that public meeting for, I know, I'm sure you or your team will be there, as well as some administration from that elementary school, just to get a feel and hear from the parents of that community. I'm sure they're probably for it, for safety and slowing down. I go through there and people can move through there pretty quickly. So I move to approve the interlocal agreement between Bassdrop County and Bassdrop ISD for Colony Oaks Elementary Crosswalk and School Zone as presented. If second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, our motion carries. Thank you, chief. All right, next, we will consider approval of memorandum of understanding between Bassdrop County Cares and Bassdrop ISD for mobile recreational unit. And Ms. Trevino, our Director of Community Relations, welcome.
Thank you. Hello again. So the Bassdrop County Cares Mobile Wellbeing and Recreation Unit encourages fun recreational activities, intergenerational activities, and critical resources that improve the health and wellness of everyone in the community. With this access, families are not only more connected to each other, but are connected to their community and the resources available to them. Under the agreement before you, Bassdrop County Cares would be able to park their mobile recreational unit in the parking lot of Red Rock Elementary School for one to two days per month. The goal of this partnership is to provide activities and community resources to our Bassdrop ISD students and their families in a safe and familiar setting. I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
An example of the recreational unit, what do they, what kind of activities do they do?
Going to have a lot of different activities, physical as well as game activities for students, and they'll have a variety of community resources for parents, so information about different types of resources that are available.
Steering committee for that, for Bassdrop County Cares, so I'm really happy about it. And I want to give a little kudos to St. David's Foundation as well. Who funded that project.
Yeah, they're a wonderful They're a wonderful supporter of, of Bastrop County Cares.
Good communication of where to place that vehicle. And Chief Bunch, are you comfortable with this?
Supports it as well.
Just had fun with the traffic and pickup and parking and everything, but we've been...
It's not school hours.
Right, it'll be after.
Okay.
Yeah.
Later evening hours.
Oh, good, okay.
Did you say it'd be monthly?
To be, to be monthly and at a regular monthly time and then possibly for special events.
Any other questions from the board? Be more than happy to entertain a motion at this time.
Bastrop County Cares and Bastrop ISD for Mobile Recreation Unit as presented.
We have a second. All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Trevino. Appreciate it. All right, moving to our information items. Our Board of Trustees calendars, well as our enrollment and our single budget purposes, purchases, more than $50,000 are all for informational only. At this time, we will discuss Region 13 Board of Directors' election, place four. And on the table here, you have a blue, baby blue ballot. You know, you only mark one and please fold it and put it in that envelope and give it to Ms. Noli. Let me read through this right quick. We received a letter of official ballot from our Education, Education Service Center, Region 13 on February 29, 2024, asking our Board of Trustees to conduct the election at our March Board Meeting and return the ballot to Region 13 on or before April 5th. The official ballot is at our, is at our seats this evening and the Board does not need to take action on this item, only nominate in the, only notate in the minutes that the ballots were distributed to the Board members. There is one contested position, place four, on the Board of Directors at Region 13 and resumes for the two candidates. I'm sorry, the resumes of the two candidates were received and attached to the board packet for consideration. After completing your vote, please place them in the envelope, seal it, and give them to Ms. Noli and return the envelope, and then we will return the envelope provided by Region 13. All right. At this time, we'll move into our closed session. The Board will now convene at the closed meeting to discuss the following items posted on the agenda for this evening, followed by the Texas Government Code 551.074, administrative contracts. No voting will take place in closed meeting. Any action of the Board wishes to take as a result of discussion in the closed session will be placed after the Board, will take place after the Board reconvenes in open meetings. It is now 6:39 and we will go into closed session.
How's our IT folks doing back there? You got green light, you ready to go? All right. The time is 7:27 PM and the board will now reconvene in the open session. I will entertain a motion at this time.
I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation on administrators' contracts as presented in closed session.
Second.
If a motion is second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Are there any objections to adjourned this meeting? If there are none, meetings adjourned. Have a good evening.